Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting of the Yukon City Council for April the 2nd, 2013 to order. If you would rise for the invocation by Pastor Ron Russ-Mussin of Christ Church of Yukon and remain standing for the flag salute, please.
Let's pray. Father, you're good to us. You give us so much. Thank you for the rain. We need that. And you've given Yukon so much. This is such a joyful place to be. And yet, I recognize, Lord, we recognize. Part of it is you give us certain areas of responsibility, and then we're to do some giving, and we're to do some managing and make some things happen. So, Lord, we can't control things like the weather, but things that you have given us, resources, we're looking at those, like tonight. And I just pray for wisdom, discretion, discernment on the part of each of the council members especially, but all that participate in tonight's gathering. Just be here and be a part of it, Lord, so we can be good stewards. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Gerba?
Here.
McCarron?
Here.
Opitz?
Here.
This evening, we have a couple of presentations, or one presentation and one proclamation. We'll start with the proclamation for the National Telecommunicator Week. Communication Officers Tiffany Evans and Ray Kimbrough. If you all would meet me around the front.
Clerk, if you would read the proclamation, please.
Proclamation, whereas in 1991 congressional resolution named the second full week in April of every year National Telecommunicator Week, and whereas emergencies can occur at any time or any place and require the assistance of police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas 911 is the hotline for help for people in emergency situations, and the 911 call-taker's voice is the first assurance that help is on the way, and whereas 911 professionals regularly meet the challenges of extremely stressful situations with calmness and efficiency, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of these emergency responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the 911 communications center, and whereas public safety dispatchers are the heart of public safety, providing assistance before any other emergency services arrive on scene, and whereas public safety dispatchers are a vital link for our emergency responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety dispatchers contribute substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of injuries and illnesses on a daily basis, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of his or her daily job duties. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Yukon declares the week of April 14 through 20, 2013, to be National Telecommunicator Week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our region's citizens and emergency responders safe. Given under my hand and seal of the city of Yukon this second day of April 2013, John Alberts, Mayor, Doug Shivers, City Clerk.
First of all, I want to thank you guys. When you hear all of what you're involved in with fire and the police and the different issues, we're always reminded by those little cute things where people call up and ask, you know, where are they or for directions or something. But it's really important whenever someone calls and their life's on the line, and the fact that you help talk them through that, or help protect the community, and you are the first line. So, and we really appreciate what you do for our community. Thank you so much. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a presentation, and I'm honored to introduce a group of people, unfortunately, from the other university, the red one. But I do have my orange tie, easy. Now, I'm flattered and that they have taken an interest and worked very hard in helping our community to have a vision about how our community might grow and make better use of the resources. And I won't steal their thunder, but I wanted to thank them. And there's a presentation from the University of Oklahoma, the College of Architecture, and it's the revitalization of Main Street. And they're here today, and I will let whoever's going to take it away. Thank you all for being here.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it very much, Mayor and Council. I know that I have about 10 or so minutes, and I'm going to use every second of it. There's a lot of slides I want to go through, but... My name is Lee Huloon. I teach landscape architecture at the other university, University of Oklahoma. And with me today is Professor Callahan, who teaches in architecture, also College of Architecture at OU, and the landscape architecture graduate students that are seated over here on my left. As I mentioned, it's a great opportunity for us to be able to present and talk about this. The work that the students are doing and have done and will continue to do throughout the rest of the semester is very important. Students in landscape architecture studios throughout the last couple of years have done similar projects throughout the state, Nichols Hills and Bethany, Stroud, Miami, and also Sepulpa. The students, the projects have won awards, both on the regional and state level, and I have tasked these students for this project, but this is the same thing they're going to do. They're also going to win an award, hopefully in the fall semester, for the work that they're doing. But most importantly is the idea that the design process doesn't happen in a vacuum. That is, we're not in Norman designing and coming back up here and telling you what you should do. Instead, it's a community effort. It's both an effort of the citizens, everyone that's here, and of course, the city council. So, in looking at what the students, the landscape architecture students have done this semester, they've basically done a site inventory and analysis so far, where we've looked at three areas of the community, the residential, the recreation, and the commercial areas. The reason we highlight those three areas is because that's where we live, where we play, and where we work, or where we shop. And in those three areas, we're trying to understand and collect information on what is there. So, that's the site inventory and analysis process. We're also looking at precedents, so what has been done elsewhere throughout the United States and other similar communities, and producing some character sketches of what some opportunities are here in Yukon. So, starting with the residential areas and looking at the inventory, site inventory and analysis, we've collected a lot of data. A lot of this information you probably are aware of. You know there's a lot of acreage that's taken up by the floodplain. That tells us a number of things. It tells us that, of course, everyone is not living, thankfully, in those areas, or a lot of people aren't living in those areas. The density map shows that. Shows that people are concentrated along the downtown core, so to speak, Route 66. And it also shows us where people, or when certain houses were built throughout the community. This chart shows the correlation between the years that houses were built in the city of Yukon and the state of Oklahoma. And you can see there's a connection between the two bars, the two colors on the chart. It's consistent with state averages. And the other thing that it tells us is that we're at about the 40-50-year mark for a lot of homes in the community. So, there's going to be a lot of future growth and a future potential, both with new homes and new people moving to the community. Where people live also has an impact on where they go to work and how they go to work. We know, I'm sure that we know that people mostly drive to work. This chart just shows us that just over 85% of people drive a car alone, and approximately 10% carpool. So, about 96% of the people in Yukon either drive themselves or drive with someone else. The data has some interesting things on it. Of course, you can see here that two people reported taking the subway to work, which I think is kind of interesting. But what it shows us also is that there are opportunities for both private transportation, public, and shared modes of transportation. So, now that we know how people drive, or how people get to work, where are they going? Most of the people are reporting that they're in about the 15- to 25-minute range of commute. Of course, that tells us, as we can sort of guess, that they're probably driving to Oklahoma City, about a 15- 20-minute commute. So, looking at precedents that have been established in terms of residential areas throughout different parts of the country, we looked at other communities. So, the first community we looked at is Hillsborough, California, which is different than Yukon. It's a suburb in northern California outside of San Francisco, and some of the new residential opportunities that they've established are making a connection between the residential use and the street, and bringing the architecture of the building down to the streets so that people on the street can sort of appreciate what's going on. And there's some more images of this in a second. Also, looking at other communities like Jacksonville, Wyoming, different than Yukon, but there are similarities in terms of bringing nature into the residential envelope and sort of going back and forth with those. And so, obviously, these are images from Wyoming. So, what can happen in Yukon? These are some character sketches of residential areas of what opportunities exist. You know, does this image show us something that could be happening on Main Street in the next five or 10 years? People living on Main Street, working on Main Street, shopping on Main Street, and how the architecture of the building coordinates with the landscape and with the streetscape. Also, throughout Main Street, there are the opportunities for creating pockets, pocket parks, nodes, places for people to rest, enjoy, and overall, in the residential community, that could be in the downtown area. And then, of course, bringing the natural setting in in coordination with single-family development and what some opportunities are for that. There's some images that basically show that. So, that was the residential areas. Looking at the park and recreation areas, there's a number of layers in the park and recreation areas that are important to understand. A few of them are shown here. And understanding how the layers of the floodplain, the parks, the road system, and the road network, and everything, how that all goes together, is significant for where we are left essentially with spaces for recreation. And typically, that's how the development occurs, right? The leftover space is the park. Some existing amenities that we found throughout the city, there's water, especially today. There's some open space areas. There are public gathering structures and a few playgrounds throughout town. And we found that there were opportunities for creating networks between the different park areas, pedestrian networks, greenways, bikeways, and those kind of things. We also looked at park areas perhaps on Main Street and the streetscape. We understand that there are obstacles between the street and the businesses, sometimes a severe obstacle, quite a severe elevation change. So, on the right at the top are some opportunities of what we can do to minimize that obstacle. Looking at the two images on the bottom, we can see that we have some areas at intersections, at corners, where perhaps a little pocket park or a small gathering space can be established in the right-of-way, but something that could be used by a number of people. Some more ideas of existing elements and some inspiration of what can be done. What we're coming up with, what we're finding, is that there are a lot of opportunities. There's a lot of space. There's a lot of opportunities for establishing little nodes, little areas throughout town. Additionally, with the recreation areas, we looked at precedents throughout the United States. The first one is in Lafayette, Colorado, where they have markets and festivals in the downtown area. They've established community gardens to get people downtown and to the downtown area. And they've marked, and clearly marked, bike lanes, not just a bike route, but bike lanes throughout town. We also looked at Edmond, which is a community that I'm sure everybody knows about. It's a little bit different in terms of its scale of population compared to Yukon, but some of the things that they've done are pretty useful. They've established the sidewalk as a place for people to be, pedestrians to be, and that's very important to create a lively downtown area and park and recreation area. Also, looking at a community outside of Chicago, Naperville, Illinois, again, they've been able to do a lot of shade, create shade areas in the downtown area, park areas throughout town, and they've really done a good network of park systems. So, some character sketches of what some opportunities are for parks areas throughout town would be to show, you know, what could be downtown here on Main Street, just north of where we are right now. What are some green spaces that could be brought into the downtown area? How would those spaces look? How do we create edges that are attractive? How do we create sort of a front porch that's green that people can interact with? And maybe there's an opportunity for a big regional park somewhere near town to the west. Maybe there's some space. Looking at the commercial areas, of course, again, we started with the site inventory and analysis, and these are images of downtown Main Street. I'm sure you're all familiar with them, and you know the right-of-way is wide. The right-of-way on Main Street is wide enough that we could almost play basketball perpendicular to the street and have enough room for some fans to sit there, too. So, there are opportunities. There's a big, wide road there. These are some other commercial areas that I'm sure you're familiar with throughout town. Of course, we were able to get some nice images of when the grass was brown to make it, you know, look like that. So, this is some of what we found. Now, what are some precedents that we can look to? Again, we're not reinventing the wheel, but what we can do is we can look to a community, Denver, Colorado, lower downtown. The locals call it LODO. And you can see in the image on the right, it's a small image, but you can see that from building facade on one side of the street to the building facade on the other side of the street is very similar to the width that we have on Main Street on Route 66 through Yukon. But the sense of scale in that image is significantly different. There's about two lanes of traffic in addition to two parallel parking lanes on either side, and a very generous, wide sidewalk. So, we're not proposing to move any buildings. Instead, what we're proposing is to maybe change the width of the sidewalk, change the width of the roadway, but still allow it to be a truck route through town. In LODO, they also created, you know, year-round decorations, inviting sidewalk spaces, those kind of things. In Fayetteville, in Arkansas, they closed down some streets for festivals throughout the year. They created mixed-use developments downtown, that is, areas where there's perhaps retail or commercial on the first floor, maybe offices on the second, and residential uses on the third floor or higher. Creating that mixed-use development is important for getting people downtown. And additionally, brand recognition. I know that the city is going through a branding process, and so having that brand recognition come through the entire community is important. The brand recognition image that's shown here is essentially just showing a banner that's attached to a light pole. Being on Route 66 provides a lot of opportunities to go after federal grants for Route 66 byway projects that fund banners just like this. So, there's a lot of opportunities. Looking at Jenks, expanding development. Development can begin on Main Street, and then it can move off of Main Street and continue to develop off of the Main Street while keeping Main Street vibrant and growing. Okay? So, we're not just looking at Main Street, but looking at the whole community as a whole. Some ideas on what the streetscape can look like. It can be greener while still being wide and accessible for people to walk, bike, drive, creating inviting sidewalk spaces for people to eat, have coffee, and enjoy the downtown area, and maybe even a farmer's market a couple times a week, closing down the street, closing down the side street, bringing people to the downtown area. Okay, so essentially, that's the inventory and analysis of the entire community of the residential areas, the park areas, and the commercial areas, so the living spaces, the playing spaces, and the working and shopping spaces. The next sort of couple of projects the students are starting to work on and continuing to work on is to look at circulation networks throughout the community. They're studying circulation. We'll continue to present some of these at future meetings, hopefully. Also, you're welcome to come to Norman, and we'll show you around town and show you some of the work and take you around campus. So, we're looking at studies of circulation, areas around town that are potential for development for, as I mentioned, bicycle, vehicular, and pedestrian applications, and more and more of this will continue to be developed. All of the images that I've shown are in front of the room here on the boards, and the students are available whenever to answer questions about it, but this is sort of the coming months for us. The next meeting, we'd like to continue talking about downtown, talking about the corridors, talking about Main Street, and talking about areas around Main Street. And with that, I'll open it up for questions or however else to sort of go about this. But I do want to say, if I can, thank you very much for the opportunity, not only today, but for the entire project, for us to work with the city. We've set up a Facebook page where the community can log on and look and see what we're doing. We're taking some pictures, and we'll post some pictures in the coming days of all of these boards and some of the other stuff we're doing on a daily basis. So, on behalf of the students and Professor Callahan, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you all very much for your help. Any questions?
Thanks.
Questions? Thank you. At this time, we have the visitor section of the meeting. If there is a visitor that is here this evening that would like to discuss a non-agended item, if they would approach the podium at this time, introduce themselves, give us their name and their address, and address the council. Seeing none, at this time, we'll recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A is the YMA consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve, A, the minutes of the regular meeting of March the 19th, 2013, and B, the payment of material claims in the amount of $45,630.30. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
At this time, we'll adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. The first item is item 1, and that's the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve, A, the minutes of the regular meeting of March the 19th, 2013, B, the payment of material claims in the amount of $317,150.12, C, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade, and D, accepting the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit Number WL000009130027 for the construction of 320 lineal feet of 8-inch waterline and appurtenances to serve the city of Yukon Fairfield Waterline Extension Project, Canadian County, Oklahoma, and E, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for April the 16th, 2013, 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12th South 5th Street in Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Second? Discussion, Mr. McCarron.
Discussion. Item C, I'd like to say we, I have a rough time looking at the attached list from the Technology Department as two beat-up old cars. And I would say that maybe we ought to start calling that the Surplus Department or something like that.
That is called "from the Technology Department" because they run the online auction where all of those are...
Okay. I just thought it was really strange that there was no technological equipment or anything available in there, and I just found that strange. So, that's fine. If we, you know, want to leave it there, that's okay with me.
Other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Next item is 2, and that's the reports of boards, commissions, and city officials.
None this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item 3 is consider approving the expenditure of funds in the amount not to exceed $122,000 subject to Article 9 of the lease agreement with the Oklahoma City Airport Trust for the Utility Relocation Work Order Project Number PC0378T, Portland Avenue, Southwest 104th Street, Southwest 89th Street, to be paid from Series B of the 2012 bond issue. Sorry. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I just got a real quick question. Now, basically, this is because of a street project that Oklahoma City is...
To extend Portland Avenue from 89th Street on up to 104th, which will cross into Will Rogers World Airport Trust land, which is also our well field. And therefore, we have lines in the way. And according to Section 9 of our agreement with the Oklahoma City Airport Trust for our water wells, we must move those out of the way of the infrastructure project.
Thanks, Grace.
Other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Opitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
The next item is 5, and that's consider approving ordinance number 1287, an ordinance which provides amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma by amending certain sections of Chapter 14, animal, and the additional, and the addition of definitions setting fees by resolution by the city council of the city of Yukon, and providing substantive procedures and penalties regarding domestic animals, wild animals, dangerous animals, animal owners, animal caretakers, feral animals, their care and their caretakers, and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion. I have a, just one point on this is, there is a, I would like to pass this with a small edit. In the very first paragraph of ordinance 1287, it says specifically feral cat communities. And my suggestion, my motion is to strike just that from the, from that opening paragraph and pass with that struck from that paragraph.
Mr. McCarron, would you entertain the suggested change amendment to your motion?
Yes.
Do we need to reread the...
No, you just need him to say he'll second it.
Mr. Smith, would you second it?
And I will second it.
The motion is amended and seconded. Any further discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gerba?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item 5A is consider approving the emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item 5A is consider approving the emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
5B is consider approving Resolution Number 2013-05, a resolution declaring and setting penalties for the conviction of offenses pursuant to Section 14-13 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Yukon, care and control regarding animals. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I have one issue to bring up on this one also.
Yes, sir.
Under the fees section, it's Section 14-44A. It specifically says feeding feral cats. I would like to amend that, the motion, to change this passage to say feeding feral animals versus cats.
Mr. Smith?
I would be happy to change my motion to revise the edit from feral cats to feral animals.
Yes, sir. And Mr. McCarron, would you second that?
Yes.
The amended motion, any further discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts? Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Next item is five C, capi- five C, consider approving rules and regulations governing feral cat communities within the City of Yukon. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Does have a second. Matter dies for lack of a second. Next item is item six, city manager's report information only. Mr. Bottom?
A couple of, three items. First of all, uh, I know that our Parks and Recreation Department has been, uh, very, uh, active through the winter months, but we're really starting to gear up. Jan and her crew, uh, uh, getting ready for, uh, spring and summer to come. Uh, a very big event, uh, within the City of Yukon starts on the sixth of April, and that is the Yukon Senior Games. Uh, this event includes many activities for men and women ages fifty and older. Uh, there, there will be over two hundred senior athletes competing in twelve sports. The largest event is the track and field, uh, meet that occurs in, uh, with, all across the city, and we certainly, uh, hope that you will support that particular event. Also, we have the kids pitch, hit, and run on April the fourteenth. Uh, that will occur at Yukon City Park. Those are, are two that are going on. I fully have another list of all kinds of, uh, activities, including pickleball, bowling, golf, uh, pool, um, basketball, horseshoes, washers, and us, and as well as the track and field events. So we encourage you as, as you, uh, make your plans to, uh, enjoy the activities of Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, I would also call your attention to, uh, to this particular update, um, on the street projects that are going on, um, across, uh, particularly the residential areas. Uh, certainly, they have been slowed down, uh, over the last, since Saturday because of the rain, but, uh, we are continuing to move forward as well as, uh, with these projects, as well as preparing the next phase of street improvements as well. Um, I will tell you that they, that there are several more, but, uh, Seventh and Poplar, Diana Drive, and Glenda Avenue, Third and Poplar, Third and Yukon Avenue, um, those will all be completed as soon as it dries up, Arnold. And, uh, uh, it's amazing what you find when you start digging up a street that's been in place for, uh, fifty to a hundred years, uh, like, uh, a gas line that is, um, causing the street to buckle up because it is not buried, uh, only to find out that that gas line has not been active for many, many years. We pull up a, a section of street, and all of a sudden, the water line blows up. Uh, and, uh, it, it has been a challenge, but, uh, we're making good progress, so I'm very pleased, uh, to tell you about. I'll also tell you very quickly that, um, on the matter of transportation, that I attended the pre-Arlnold, and I attended the, uh, pre-work conference, uh, concerning the I-40, uh, improvements, including the resurfacing of one bridge, uh, and completely rebuilding four other bridges, as well as widening and, uh, exit work. Um, I have given you the, uh, minutes of that meeting for your review, uh, but, uh, Councilman Gerba, to your question two weeks ago about the lanes staying open, that is in fact covered in here, that, and everything that they've got to do, plus if they're going to close them down, what they have to pay.
Excellent. Thanks.
So, uh, I'd ask you to look at that. Finally, uh, Big Trash Day. That'll be April the twentieth, um, at the transfer station, and, uh, we encourage everybody to take advantage of, uh, cleaning up your property, uh, particularly, uh, the debris, uh, that might cause some, uh, storm drains to be stopped up, uh, throughout the city, as, and then also to, uh, electronics to be properly disposed of. Uh, the electronic portion of this is being donated to the Relight the Mill Project and, um, uh, their E-Waste Day. So, uh, if you have any of those, uh, that you don't know how to get rid of properly, take it to Big Trash Day down at the transfer station on April the twentieth, and, uh, we can properly dispose of all those things for you. With that, Mayor, I stand ready for questions.
Questions? Questions? I have a question. On Big Trash Day, some people have asked me, what about a curbside big, Big Trash Day? Is that in our future, or...
Yes, it is.
Okay, but not on the twentieth?
Not on the twentieth.
Okay.
That is correct.
But later this year, or...
As soon as we can get the equipment, um, which will be after July first, uh, we intend to start a regular Big Trash Day.
Okay.
Uh, at curbside.
Okay. But right now, you're going to have to haul it down to the transfer station yourself.
That's correct.
Okay? Item seven is the next item. That's new business, no new business. The next would be item eight, that'd be council discussion. Councilman McCarron?
Well, I've got quite a few things this evening. I, uh, have really, really enjoyed all of the folks from OU coming tonight and giving us their presentation and their time, and certainly your thoughtfulness and your ideas. Uh, I think they're right on point in an awful lot of areas. I still want to see how we're going to get that Main Street down there where we can get bicycles and walkways. I'm also excited to hear about the things having to do with exercise and putting people out there, uh, in a, in a good situation with good facilities. The velodrome particularly piqued my interest because of, there's a lot of people out here who like to ride bikes, and, and we don't necessarily have a real good environment for that at this time. Uh, you know, I was just commenting on somebody the other day, talking about all of the traffic and everything else, and I just said, "Well, if you don't like the traffic, you know, you have to remember, we are the traffic." So, the bottom line is, is that we have to take care of ourselves. And, uh, I also want to, uh, particularly, uh, thank Professor Loon and, and, uh, Callahan for their efforts in, in our behalf as well. Presentation is very exciting, and it's also, I think, uh, pretty exciting to actually have this presented, uh, in forums far outside the City of Yukon, around the, not only the United States, but I guess you're even going to go overseas with this, is that correct? And just sort of take it over, uh, to, uh, Europe, I assume, and, and, uh, in that area that, that's, uh, also something, uh, pretty neat. I've been to Europe a couple of times, and every time I've gone, I say Yukon, and they just say there, "Oh, Yukon." So I think that's a wonderful opportunity for the town. I did want to take a minute and thank every one of the folks that have worked on the, the, uh, Animal Control, uh, ordinance that we passed tonight. Uh, it's rare that we have, uh, an item that has been as contentious, uh, as it has been, and to bring that to a final re- resolution tonight, uh, was, was a very good thing. And, uh, certainly to move forward, there are enormous number of things that were in there that got fixed. The ordinance was over twenty-two years old, so I want to thank all of thirty of the folks who came to the meetings at the Police Department, as well as all of the other councilmen who, uh, put in their input on this, and, uh, and I think we've, you know, at least come to a, a, a decision point on the ordinance and gotten it taken care of. Other than that, I would also like to thank Mr. Robbie, because, you know, ever since, uh, I've come to this, he certainly has been, uh, he and Mr. Adams have been very forthcoming and bringing information to us on all of the repair activity. Yukon is a hundred-year-old town, and we've had a lot of maintenance issues, and for us, I think we've taken a couple of very large steps forward in fixing a lot of things that have needed to have been fixed for a long time, and I certainly appreciate it since a lot of them seem to be in my war. Uh, and, uh, and a lot of people have expressed their, their thank you. Uh, you know, we've had items that have been out there for thirty years that finally come to fruition and, and gotten fixed. So, uh, with that, uh, I think that's it, Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Gerba?
Um, I also want to thank the, uh, the crew from OU, the architecture students and professors. Uh, it's really exciting to have you down here, and I'm, uh, just like, um, Mike was saying, I'm really, um, charged about hearing your ideas. Um, I think what's really interesting too is, what's really exciting about the plans that you talked about piqued my interest also, was tying the downtown area with pedestrian traffic, or let's say bicycle traffic, to the parks that we've already got. We kind of pride ourselves on some of the parks we've got here for such a small town, and I think that's one of the keys to, to making this, this process work, is really getting people moving, getting them out of their cars, getting them to start using the recreational facilities we have, and then, you know, coming downtown to, to enjoy some others, like small pocket parks, or, you know, for want of a better term. So, I thank you guys for that. Um, and I'd, I'd also like to invite you all to come down for any of our, um, we're kind of running into the festival season right now. Come down to Yukon, check out some of the festivals, and it'll give you an even better feeling of what Yukon's all about. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to, uh, start by, um, giving kudos to Councilman McCarron for his, uh, efforts in working for his constituents and, uh, the, uh, other citizens of Yukon with the revisions in the Animal Control, uh, ordinance. I think it's a positive, uh, move, and, uh, I know it's a little frustrating that probably not all of the participants got everything that they would like to have seen in it, but I think that it, uh, uh, represents, um, a larger body of citizens in Yukon as it was approved, uh, and not approved this evening. So I, I do want to give, uh, kudos to Councilman McCarron. It's nice to work with people that bring something to the table. That's all. Thank you.
Reverend Opitz?
Reverend Opitz. Be me, right? I guess, uh, you know, I'll...
Where do, where do we live? Yukon! And is it great?
It is a great place to live and be here. Now, just so you know, I'm going to thank the other school too. And y'all know what the other school is? That is the other school, OU. I tell you what. You've done a great job. I want to thank you for what you've done so far because it's excellent, and, um, I just want you to know, when you talk to people downtown in our downtown community, they say, "Rick, that's been going on for twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, forty years. Nobody's ever revitalized downtown. It's just not going to happen." With you folks from OU, it's going to happen, and it is going to be attainable, and it is going to be affordable. Now, if you didn't hear those two words, listen again, attainable and affordable, because you can do it, and then we can put our feet to it as a city, as we always do in all the things that we do. We give, always give it our best efforts, and then we make it happen. And, uh, we've got a make-it-happen city around here because this is the place to be. Yukon is not just an old chunk of coal. We are the diamond someday, okay? So, uh, we're real excited about Yukon and, uh, all of the parks and all of the things that we have, and what we're going into is just all fitting together. I want to say it's fitting together. Everything that you're doing and some other companies are doing is fitting together, and I just see it a great thing, and I want to thank you very, very much for that. And I also want to thank Mr. McCarron too, for all of his efforts and all of his work that he's put in on the animal ordinance. Thank you, Mike. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mike, thank you. You did work hard and, and tirelessly with the difficult issue, and thank you for your hard work. And, and just kudos to you all again, I mean, for helping us to think outside the box. So we've, you've heard about hundred-year-old pipes and, and, and things about, you know, there was a, one of the bankers here in town offered free interest loans, or in, no interest loans, to change Main Street, and no one took him up on it, or at least that's, that's the rumor. Um, so we need to not talk about, you know, why, this isn't going to happen, but let's talk about why it will happen. So a positive attitude. Thank you all for coming here and sharing, uh, your information, and it, and changes difficult sometimes, but also just the, the, uh, ability to think outside the box and the courage to think outside the box. Uh, you know, a lot of things continue to happen because that's the way they've always happened. So we're glad that you're here to help us think about using the big slab of concrete over here for a park bench. You know, apparently that hadn't occurred to us over the last, I don't know, twenty-some years. I graduated from high school thirty years ago, and I think that slab of concrete was here then, so thank you. Uh, maybe I'd be brighter had I not gone north and gone south, so, but I do...
Yes, sir.
Oh, let's, hey, hey, order, order, order. Order. Y'all couldn't stand me. You might not now, anyway. But thank you, all, all kidding aside, thank you so much, and we are, if you can't tell, we are excited. We like to hear, you know, how about, how our community is going to be better, not only for us, but for time to come, and that's, that's, that's what's bright. I appreciate that. Um, under the same vein, it is, uh, it's springtime. You talked about running. It, I have seen a lot of people out running, jogging, walking, walking their dogs, riding their bikes.